Hi, good morning, good evening. I am so sorry for the delay. I tried to log in and I apparently didn't have the correct the correct passcode. So my sincere apologies. Thank you for your time and for your patience. So my name is Audrey LeBree. I'm Chair of the Winchita and Board of Selectmen. Mr. White, welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for having me today. I look forward to having this conversation.
Beautiful day out there where you are.
Yes.
So also present is Danielle LaPointe, Secwoman, Melissa Blanchard, a Selectwoman, Jane LaPointe, who is a resident, and Anna Arthen is a resident. Linda Daigle is one of our Executive Assistants.
Great.
So I'll just jump in here. What prompted you to apply for this position? Yes.
Going to interrupt. Would you like to call the meeting to order?
That would probably be a good thing. Thank you very much. 5:36. We are called to order. All right, go ahead, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. So in the month of May, I left my position at Boston Medical Center to assist my wife, who had a surgical procedure at Mass General, so she's going to be home for a few months. So I was working full-time, but needed to take a leave of absence, so I'm going to be looking for part-time work and then going back to work full-time. So an interim role seemed like a better fit for me. As I'm teaching in the evenings, but I'm still sort of home with my wife, who can't drive, and it's going to be home for a window of time. So I'm trying to sort of work with my family and my children to make sure that they have the support they need for a few months.
Um, I've got your resume here. Very extensive, a financial background. What do you, what's your take on municipal, the municipal side of running things?
It's interesting. I mean, I, I have 25 years of experience teaching governmental nonprofit accounting at the Extension School where I am this evening. So one of the things I would always do in these classes, which I teach in the fall, and I've done so for 25 years, is kind of really do deeper dive on the municipal piece of financing, but you had to do a little bit more about that. So we do a lot of work on taking a sample nonprofit organization, a sample town administration, kind of doing deeper dive. So as you do that deeper dive on the financials, it sort of also got into areas in terms of strategy and planning and kind of, we would sort of pick a town or a city to kind of work with throughout the sort of the course, and we've done that for many, many years. So you got to sense or flavor a little bit more of sort of not just the financial piece, but also some of the operational pieces in terms of core services, in terms of education, fire, police, those kinds of things going forward. So I have a lot of experience in teaching the area, but also a deeper dive on sort of the municipal piece. So I'm comfortable with it as a concept financially. I have not, so I've obviously worked in municipal, except for about a year and a half when I worked in New York City.
Okay, thank you. I will open up the questions from the board.
Excuse me.
Do we have any questions?
I do. I wasn't quite ready. I didn't think it was going to be that quick. So you answered one of my biggest questions. So in speaking with the current town manager about what his concerns would be in terms of, you know, interim coverage, he has expressed to me that the projects we have going are in pretty concrete stages where he's not too worried about them for a few months because we're concerned about losing our momentum. There's, there's lots of good things going on. But his biggest concern, because we have new accounting staff, we have a new town accountant, she's, you know, well versed as an accountant, but new to management, new to supervision. Perhaps new to Munis, I don't remember, maybe not. But um, so finances is one of the bigger concerns to make sure that the support is there. So it sounds like you obviously have a very good grasp on that. So I guess, what would you do to make sure we keep moving forward in that aspect as well as, I don't know if you've had a chance really to look at our website or our initiatives, but we have a lot of.
Yeah, no, I looked at the annual report. I tried to pull down your financials. I spent a little bit of time on it this weekend. So I did have a question. Is your audit sort of more June 30th? When's your fiscal year? I couldn't tell. I'm sorry. What's that?
It starts July.
Oh, so you're going to be going through the audit this summer?
Is it in the summer, Audrey, Madam Chair?
Um.
And then you, yeah, usually go through the audit in the summer, July and August, you present it to the board in September, October. That's, that's what I normally do.
Yeah, typically we get our artists, usually fall into the winter, and then we have our auditor come out with their results. March, February or March. Of course, I say that's when it starts from, they may be starting over the summer. I know it takes them a while to gather all that information, but typically we get our, our report, audit report in the first quarter or so of the year.
So I guess the first thing I would do is I'd probably spend some time looking at the the audit that would be coming up, because I think once your fiscal year closes, you just have to close out the books, look at the financials, get your funds ready, get your financials, your work papers ready. So that'd be the first time I look at it. And it's actually a good time to look at the 12 months before and then kind of work with the financials for the audit and then maybe take a look at what the budget looks like for fiscal '23, '24, which I assume would be July 1st, and kind of look at the software and kind of go and kind of look at sort of what's gone on for the one year, and then look at the budget and kind of roll up your sleeves on sort of that capability. And I think that when I did look at your financials, it kind of made complete sense, the way it's kind of structured and set up. And but yeah, I was kind of curious if the audit would be starting probably this summer, because it does require it to go into March, but that's mostly because of sort of the nature of fund accounting. And so the auditors do some work on the kind of the grants and contracts, which is sort of more of a A133 Uniform Guidance component. That, so there's an, there's a financial statement piece to it, and then there's a grant and government piece, which is different, which requires sort of more, more due diligence on that sampling for programs and things of risk.
Great.
Thank you. Um, Melissa, any thoughts, questions?
Um, do you see any priority issues with Winchita and if so, how would you address them?
I guess I didn't see a very recent copy of the audit, but I was curious if we could just have a conversation about sort of how you kind of handled the pandemic and, you know, the funding you received and sort of where you are now, coming out of the pandemic in '22 and '23. And I don't want to say this, and you know, but it's kind of like you're on your own now because the pandemic money is gone. Now you're kind of dealing with sort of just where you are financially. I I couldn't get a sense of that and look at your website and financials, but I'm kind of curious if we could talk a little bit about where you are with your, your funding, your support from the state, instead of what it looks like for like the next window of time of year or two.
I mean, I can only speak to a very high level. I know that ARPA was Godsend to us. You know, we're a low-income community, somewhat rural. It's harder, I feel like, for us to come by money than, you know, bigger cities. So it was a Godsend. Mr. Saltback was very good about using that ARPA funding. I think, I don't remember how much is still available, but it's, it is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair, you're marked for specific projects still for the most part.
Yeah, I think we're, our balance is a little over a million still, and we've got about little over a half, maybe three quarters earmarked.
Is it earmarked for capital projects or earmarked for initiatives more recurring costs?
I believe the capital projects, one of the things that we're facing, we share a water source with the one town over, and the lake is in the next town over, Ashburnham, and the water main coming into town is, God knows, 100 years old or so. So we've been working on getting funding in place to replace that. It's, it's close to a $10 million project. And part of that remaining ARPA fund is earmarked for, for a down payment on that anyway.
And it did look like you received sufficient support from the state of $14 or $15 million. Is that consistent year to year, or is that sort of like fluctuate with, you know, the population of the town or education? Is that pretty consistent for your budgeting purposes from the state's support?
I'm not sure if I know the answer to that. Danielle, want to take a stab at it?
No. I know that with the Student Opportunity Act that is in place now, so this isn't directly to your question.
Yeah.
While that was another windfall for the schools, and the schools, actually, there's a great relationship right now with the town manager and the superintendent work incredibly collaboratively. It's kind of the first time in our history that that's happened. But while the Student Opportunity Act really set the schools up temporarily anyway, really well in terms of minimum net school spending, we're actually a little bit above that for the first time ever. It did kind of cripple the town side. So whether or not it's consistent, I can't say, but I do know that that in particular made it tougher for the town, because while it goes to the school, it kind of upped the town's responsibility. And I'm not, I'm not well versed in intricacy and how students play, but I'm sure you are.
Yeah, the cherry sheets and everything, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, realistically, Winchita depends on state funding more than we should. We're, I don't know what the percentage is of, of, if you take our budget of the school budget, state versus what are we, our own revenues. We definitely rely on the state.
Okay.
When, an initiative that we're working on is we recognize that the budget, the next couple of years, we managed to, the town manager was able to balance it for FY '24. It's looking pretty ugly the next year or two with all the increases across the board, price increases. We don't want to have to cut, start cutting services. So we're really aggressively searching ways to increase our revenues. And as Danielle said earlier, we have a lot of things. We've made great strides last two, three, four years, a lot of momentum. And even though it's an interim period for a town manager, we want to keep that momentum going. So we're looking to someone who can keep that ball, keep that ball rolling.
Are there any major capital projects beyond the ones that are already in the queue that you'd like to start during this interim period? Are you going to just let the ones that are in the queue kind of be completed?
I don't know if start is the right word, but I'm personally a little fearful. The townspeople voted to approve the design for a new, well, not a new fire station, but a fire station upgrade renovation, because it is well past useful. They really shouldn't be in there. But I'm a little fearful that that's going to drop through the cracks with it not really being started, started prior to Mr. Saltback's departure. So that, in my mind, that's, that's one important one to keep that.
We have a few ongoing capital projects. We have a building in town called Old Murdoch, was the original high school back in the 1800s. It's now our senior center, and we've been doing some phased work on it. We just finished phase one. There's still a couple more phases. It's all, you know, big brick with towers and, and everything. So that's, that's an ongoing capital project. I mentioned the water main. I would imagine Mr. Saltback probably has a couple items on his, well, I won't get to them now, but the list to get to, as something falls off one end, you always fill in the pipeline. But I can't think of anything huge at this point.
Well, the Blair Square intersection, a particular intersection in town that needs to be redesigned, traffic problems. It was designed, I really think back when there were horse and buggies, and it functioned great back then, but not so much right now.
Yeah, absolutely.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I could ask, I don't, I don't, oh, you're out in Marshfield. So typically town hall is, it's open Monday through Friday. I mean, excuse me, Monday, Thursday. Staff is off on Fridays. Obviously, usually the town manager is available by email or text or call or whatever. How's that commute going to be for you? Is that going to be doable Monday through Thursday, given, given why you're searching for a position like this?
In general, I just have to flip the care for my wife to be more of an, during the day versus in the evening, because now if someone's with her at night when I'm teaching, so I just flip the coverage. And it's sort of just, it's going to be like another few weeks. She's actually been recovering quite quickly. That was going to be three months. It might be more like 10. So she's probably getting into the end of June. She's sort of almost there. So I just have someone who's with her sort of to assist her, and she's, their person's there more like from 4 to 11 when I'm teaching, and then I would just flip it to be more like, you know, when I go to work. So it's, it's one of those, I just need the coverage for that. So the persons would be okay with that.
Be able to work that out. Thank you.
Asking that, I apologize. I just.
No, it's fine. Yeah, it makes sense.
What else do we have? Any other questions, thoughts? So, yes, go ahead.
All right, Madam Chair.
You're fine.
This doesn't matter either way, because we're open to both. But given your introduction, it sounds like you're probably not interested in the full-time position that we would be doing a search committee for. Is that accurate?
Yeah, probably not. I'm probably going to stay in the nonprofit higher. I mean, I don't really know. I've never really been sort of a town manager, but yeah, I don't really. Why is the other, is the town manager leaving for another opportunity? Just if I can ask that question. Okay.
At the moment, it's about an hour and close to hour and a half, and his new commute will be about 15 minutes.
Okay. Yeah, commute becomes important. So I've got it.
Yes.
Family, that's huge.
Yes, young family.
I do, overall, he's, he's, you know, overall, there's some, some things we have, you know, every town has its challenging aspects. And he certainly encountered a couple of those, but I do think from my conversations with him anyway, overall, he's happy here. It was an opportunity he couldn't pass up.
Do you a lot of, have a lot of open positions in the budgeting process where there's a lot of people that are sort of looking to be hired? Or is it sort of the town sufficiently staffed with regard to sort of the town manager in the, the office?
I think at the moment, we're pretty well-staffed. I mean, over the last couple of years, we have had turnover in the town accountant's office, in the treasurer collector's office, which, you know, leads back to what Danielle said earlier about the financial, the financial aspect of everything. Just the town manager, Mr. Saltback has been very good about keeping an extra eye on that. But I don't think there's much open at the moment in town hall for positions, but then you never know. So.
What kind of software does the town use, if I can ask? What, what's their platform for ERP?
We use Munis.
Okay.
Are you familiar with that, or?
I've heard of, I've actually, I've used more Oracle, but I've heard, I've heard of Munis. Yeah, I have some friends who work in town positions, so CFOs and other positions.
Okay. Yeah, it's a fairly common municipal program. So we are in a process of sustaining RFPs for a consulting company and help us with the full-time manager search. We hope to have that contract signed and start that search sometime in July. You know, it could, we could hit the jackpot right off. It could be, you know, three or four months, five months. Just making aware that we don't know for sure how long this, we'll need an interim.
Sure. No, I understand. That makes sense.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't think I have any question, any more questions, Danielle or Melissa?
Other than whatever questions Mr. White might have for us. I know you asked about the audit, but you know, outside of that, what other questions you might have for us?
Yeah, I'm sure. What is the schedule in the, in the summer and the fall for sort of the town manager with regard to staffing some of the committees? I just, I just was, it's a sort of like once every three months, once a month. What's the sort of the context of sort of like coordinating? There's obviously there's several groups and departments and committees, and I know there's a, you know, select member, but if there's other staffing committees, there's, Chris, how does town manager fill those responsibilities for health? There's so many committees, just kind of curious how that works?
Meaning for like attendance at the committee?
No, no, it's just, there's, there's, there's a, there's a Department of Agent Committee. There's, I mean, I know there's committees you would go to attend, like the finance committee, but there's others, I'm just not sure. Like, when I mean staffing, like, does that person sort of like work with the director from, I just don't know how that would sort of, I know it works where I, where I am. I'm not sure it works in a municipality.
I'll let Audrey speak to that.
You know, finance committee, he works with the superintendent, but he doesn't attend meetings.
Okay.
There, I want to say there, there may be one outside appointment that is currently filled by the town manager, maybe with a regional transportation board or something like that. Had not thought about that, but I think that if in, if there's any such position, you know, we would fill it from within town hall for the interim. I think it would be safe to say that we wouldn't expect the interim.
And so the selectmen get to get, get together as a group, the five selectmen, once a month, once a quarter?
Yeah, our typical schedule is twice a month, second and fourth Mondays. We meet at 6:30. Over the summer, we typically cut it down to one meeting a month, so July 10th is a July meeting, and I can't think of the August date off the top of my head. We meet as needed, obviously. If something comes up and it's urgent, then we give the notice. We have to give 48-hour notification for open meeting law configurations.
And how is the Department of Education handle that as a group? It's obviously one of the major components of the budget and the, and the, and the services. Is that sort of handled, sort of, there's a, does it still go through the selectmen, or is there a different process for the Department of it?
We do have a school, the superintendent and the school committee, while they are part of the town, they do their own budget. They do a lot of their own admin work. There are some areas where there is overlap, obviously payroll, things along that line. But as far as interaction with Gessi and anything else on the educational side, I think is, if any, very little to the town manager. We do have a I'm trying to, we are a non-regionalized school system. We're one of the few in the area that are non-regionalized, which creates its problems and challenges, because we're providing an entire K through 12 education experience for what really is a limited number of students. But we have been, as Danielle said earlier, also a really good working relationship with the, with the school over the last four or five years, so.
Are there any labor union contract issues for the interim managers that are going to be kicked to when the new town manager gets hired?
No, all of the contracts have been, any, any contract that needed to be renewed is done. The negotiation is done, so there would be nothing of that involved.
And are there any components with regard to the capital projects that require sort of issuing some additional debt or some bonds, or is it sort of all going to be funded with the existing budgeting resources?
Um, there could be some additional get slash bonds. I can't answer that at this point.
Okay.
I really don't know.
I do know, for example, Madam Chair, I'm sorry.
Yep, thank you.
Um, I do know, for example, so, so there's a foundation called the Robertson, Robinson Broadhurst Foundation, who along with the town of Winchita in Massachusetts, there's another town in New York where years ago there was a trust set up for the benefit of those two towns, and we get millions of dollars in grant funding from Robinson Broadhurst. And I do know specifically, we were, we're kind of hopeful and kind of expecting we get a good chunk of money for that water, that water main line that was mentioned, but they declined to fund that at this moment. So I do know, especially given the cost, you know, everybody working on that is trying to get really creative and thinking outside the box other ways to get money for that. So there's not as much debt, definitely.
Yeah, and whether that would fall within the interim town manager period or afterwards, at this point, I don't know. That is a good point. Thank you for pointing that out. That could be a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
What else do you have for us? Any other questions?
I know there's, that's great. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. So we have one more interview, and then we'll be making our decision Monday evening. When would you be available to start work? Should that come your way?
Yeah, I could, I could let you know if we go forward with a discussion. I don't have that. I just can't give you a date now because I need to come talk to my family.
Sure, no, absolutely. All right, well, anything else from the board?
Me, thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Have a good evening.
If anything comes up in the interim or any thoughts, please reach out to Gary Calendrella, and we'll be in touch. Thank you so much.
You as well. Thank you.
Bye now. Thank you, ladies. So we do have William Baldwin. He'll be on at 6:15.
Oh, you have another interview tonight?
We do. One that kind of came up at the last minute. They've been trying to get ahold of him, and he was able to accommodate us this evening.
Oh, thank you.
Would you like a recess? Is that what you want, or?
That's what I'm thinking, just recess. I'm not going to close the Zoom or anything. We'll just leave it all open.
Good, because it's not easy to get onto town Zoom.
I know.
Madam Chair, the motion to recess until a couple minutes prior to 6:15?
I second that motion.
Thank you. I'll in favor say aye.
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 All right, it is 5:59. We're in recess until 6:12.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you then. Thank you, see you then. Mr. Baldwin is here. Couple minutes early. Which is fine. Just let me know when you're ready and I'll let him in.
All set.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you, sir?
Well, thank you.
Good, good. Thank you for fitting us into your schedule.
Absolutely, good night, Lucy.
Um, I'm Audrey Labrie, I'm Chair of the Winchpin Board of Selectmen.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, uh with us this evening also are two of the members of the board, we have uh Danielle LaPointe.
Hello.
And uh Ms. Blanchard.
Hello.
Uh, we have a a few citizens with us this evening, Jane LaPointe and Anna Arthen and Linda Deagle is um from our town manager's office.
Hmm, excellent.
So um looking over your resume, uh what prompted you to you know, to uh apply for the interim town manager position, if I can start with that?
Oh, certainly, um so um I'm in a, I'm in a time in my life now, so I've retired from two jobs, so uh from the military and uh from my first career and so um I have been a a big advocate of local government. And as you can see, I've been a selectman for a very long time, uh I'm the senior actually member on the board. Uh, but before that, I was also, how I got started was the school board. Uh, so we were at that time, uh and it still is, it is a four-town district. Um, so um and so I I grasped the opportunity of being involved and being part of a solution um back in those days, because that was my thought process, but I also uh want to make a difference. And this is a time in my life where I think, based on the years of experience of building up uh leadership and and learning and so forth, that I can share those with a community um such as this and i- in this community, and I know people that you know, obviously live there and it's a beautiful community, it's got some significant history. But more importantly, I want to make a difference and I want to be a part of uh of of uh helping and um and uh continue to have the community grow, so.
Oh, thank you, now does uh Atkinson have a town manager or a town administrator?
We have a town administrator.
Administrator, okay.
Yeah, we learn things a little bit different than you all, um uh because, well, as you well know, the Board of Selectmen, we we do the hiring and firing, but we we give a lot of latitude to our town administrator, like he is almost like a town manager, in a sense, without the title.
Okay. Um, so you've worked with uh Board of Selectmen, School Committee. Um, what's your financial background or experience working with finance committees?
So I have worked with budget committees. Um, obviously, our own budget committee, which um has been quite interesting uh from year to year, but I I got to tell you that I've worked with budget committees even prior to me being involved um in the school board or um or selectmen. Um, as a as a municipal employee, I've worked with the budget committee closely um for uh emergency management budgets and law enforcement budgets. So um I have an extensive amount of um experience with it. And it's uh you know, line item budgeting, understanding it, how it works, you know, appropriations and so forth, how to do warrant articles, how to write warrant articles, so forth. How to change, you know, up here, our budget committee is the only one that can change the account numbers or add account numbers, so
Right.
The process, quick process for that and so forth, I've added line item budgets to uh line item accounts to budgets and so forth like that, where it's appropriate. Sometimes, as you know, with time change, when people change in different positions, sometimes it gets convoluted and with the budget and add too many and it really doesn't need to be, you know, it could fall under this category, you know, so forth like that, assessing and evaluating it, so.
Sure, okay. Um, so it to prepare for this evening, did have you, did you have a chance to go to our website or or what did you find out about Winchpin and your hunt?
Uh, well, I found out a co- uh several things, actually, uh which is interesting, uh because you had two villages that uh have made up uh Winchpin and which is interesting and how it used to be a very industrialized textile industrialized uh community. Um, uh what's interesting, it it was um you know, the, I I found it interesting that it's something with Canada in nineteen thirty-five, which how they developed that and then it was incorporated in nineteen seventeen sixty-four or something.
Sixty-four, yeah, I was uh so uh something of Ipswich, Canada initially.
Correct, that is correct.
Yep.
I'm going by memory here, what I remember, and it was interesting because this, again, you have some historicalness there at the uh of a community. Um, and I did notice, uh you know, um your population did decrease from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty. Um, so I think it's right now from twenty twenty census was like ten thousand three hundred sixty-four and you have like forty-four point one square miles and it's a very large area.
Yes, it is.
Which it makes it beautiful because you probably have a lot of good um forest and you know, probably conservation areas. Um, but I am, I have to congratulate you all because you have, you won the grant for four hundred and sixty-six thousand eight hundred something dollars for the paths and stuff and that is phenomenal.
Yes.
Uh, because we are doing that ourselves, developing pathways through our conservation areas, but we're we're doing it so anybody can go there, whether you're a child or adult or elderly. So the 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 pathways are going to be, so you can push a wheelchair and take these different things, so that's what we focused on. And uh and we're raising money to continue to do those pathways, which is fantastic. Um, so I think that's great for uh for you all to have that and uh in your theater that you opened up, the Amphitheater, I I thought was phenomenal and that's another great um asset to the community and bring the community together.
Yeah, the the last couple of years have been busy, um we achieved a lot, we have uh you know, the amphitheater. Uh, we just finished uh redesign, um re- reconstruction of our main street, which is called Central Street. Um, we have a microbrewery moving into town.
Oh, good.
Um, so so we've got a lot of good momentum going, uh and we're looking to keep that momentum going now, even with an interim, uh recognizing um that we will be looking for a full-time at some point.
Right.
We we definitely want to keep that uh momentum going and actually that, I'll segue into that question. Um, it, would you be interested in if this seems to like if it in a full-time position or are you looking just for the interim?
No, actually, uh I'm glad you brought that up, uh thank you for bringing that, because I was going to have a question down the road, but we're we're heading right in that direction. Um, no, I I actually, the reason I applied for the interim is for the long term.
Okay.
So that's what I'm focusing on and that's what I was wondering with this, could this evolve into the long-term position?
Okay.
Because you need, you know, um you come up with strategic plans and you know, and you want to lay them out and I've done thirty days, sixty, ninety day plans and I've done a hundred and eighty day plans and knock on wood, I've been successful in completing those, but in this situation, you have a lot of things that you want to tackle, but you also want to be able to listen to people and find out, you know, like the board, what their, what their goals are and listen to the department heads, what their goals are and and in the community as a whole. And that's important because you want to have their ear, so you need time to do all that, and so that's what I would look forward to.
All right, thank you. Um, questions, comments from the board members? Danielle?
Chair, thank you, I for some reason couldn't unmute myself, um.
Good evening.
Good evening. So so speaking about the keeping the momentum and having these capital projects that we've either started or just finished and upcoming on the horizon, our current town manager is is pretty confident that for a couple couple few months, you know, those will be okay, but I I'm interested um in your background experience and also how how you would anticipate kind of But I'm interested in your background experience and also how you would anticipate kind of keeping that going. Do you have experience in terms of, like, you know, building projects and infrastructure and stuff like that?
Yeah, it's funny you say that. So, I have been fortunate to be a part of, I'm actually currently with one right now, and I've been a part of big projects. I helped build a police station in Blasto. I was part of that project. As a matter of fact, I was fortunate and blessed that my Chief, God rest his soul, he sent me to Florida to learn how to build police stations, fire stations, and emergency management centers. You know, and I didn't think there was such a thing, but he did, there was. And so, he sent me to that. And I took a great deal back with that and utilized it towards that project. And then, currently, I sit and chair a committee, because we're going to build a police station, a brand-new one in our town. And so, that building project, I'm segueing on that right now currently. I've also helped with other projects that we've had going on in town in terms of recreation, our department. Also, looking, forecasting future, we put committees together to do a master plan, which we're currently doing now, for the future, for current and future of the town. And then, the big one that we're working on also is, I'm sure you're all aware, is the housing, assistant housing projects. Now, like you guys, in your community, in our community, we're a very affluent community. So, we don't have a lot of apartment buildings. We have one section of town that has apartment buildings in it. But what we're looking at is, is other ways to bring some affordable housing, you know, without ruining the character of our rural community. You know what I mean? So, and part, one of those ways that we're looking at that and what we're going to evaluate and should know by the, we should know, we should have that report finished probably by November, December. But is like additional dwelling units. You've heard of that. So, those are projects that you can incentivize builders to build additional dwelling units, which brings affordable housing to, you know, because families have families living with them. So, you know, so to help to make it affordable housing. And then also looking at maybe a different type. We have 55 and older complexes in our community, which I'm going to tell you, I believe in them strongly. We have one that's currently being built, nine buildings. We had two or three already done in different areas, and they bring a significant tax impact to our community on the positive side. So, and then, I was, I'm also looking, we have a, we have a historical building that used to be many different things. It used to be a schoolhouse originally. So, it dates back way, way, way back. So, that's why it has a historical. Then, it was vacated, and then it was a police station. Yeah, it obviously didn't work as well as a police station. And then, it was up until probably a year ago, it was a juvenile family mediation center, which we own the building. Now, it's going back to be, they're going to actually rename it to the school it originally was, and we're going to be part of the historical group, and they're going to revitalize it. And so, we have that project going on as well. So, many different aspects.
Sounds like our town hall.
Yes, you just really got to evaluate your facilities and really assess them from a maintenance perspective and how to maintain them. Because oftentimes, in municipalities, we get lost in maintenance. We don't budget enough for maintenance. And that is one of the true things that you have to look at for each facility, if you want to maintain them. You let them go for so long, that price tag becomes now a larger price tag, you know? And then, you're, now you're asking the tax rate as to foot a big bill, when you could have been more proactive and prevented, you know, through the budget process. So, so having line items for buildings is one of the biggest things that I have strived for, and we are now heading in that final direction to do that. Because it's just, you know, if you maintain your buildings, you know, they last a while. I hope I answered your question.
You did, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So, my other question is kind of about the financial side. Not in terms necessarily of budgeting, but in the infrastructure and the systems that we use for financials. So, we have, we've had some staff to turn over, and we have some new staff, including the Town Accountant. And, you know, some people over in that area. And so, while she's great at what she does, she's, you know, she's new, but things are going well. But we do, it's something that we monitor closely. And in speaking with the current Town Manager, he's pretty confident for a few months in the projects that are going on. But his biggest, not concern, biggest watch point for us, he has articulated to be, would be the financial aspect of it. So, I'm wondering about your experience with Munis and the accounting and on all that stuff to be able to really keep a close eye on that piece as interim specifically.
So, we as a board, we do that now. We have, we get monthly reports, and we look at the percentages of each of the budgets that are out there. And we like to maintain it, where we like to see us sitting comfortably at year-end. Pretty much half, quarterly, we, I like, I look at it quarterly to see where we're at percentage-wise. But most people look to see, well, where are we at halfway through the year? And they say, well, the numbers are pretty good. You know, we're at 60% of the overall budget and so forth. But I'm pretty in tuned on that part. And then, our financial director, who has been with us probably for, I would say, a little, little over a year. So, she's still learning the system that we have. And I can't, and I'm having a brain fart, because I forget it, what the name of it is. But what I will tell you, that I know the school district uses the same one. But when I looked into it, this particular financial director, I made sure we set money aside, so training for her, so she could learn the system more thoroughly, go to the trainings, develop and utilize more of the product than what we were using in the past. Because what I learned from previous financial directors, they were only using certain segments of the financial software and weren't utilizing it to its utmost that we pay for, you know? But managing that and overseeing it, you know, obviously, our Town Administrator, you know, oversees it. But we oversee the overall budget, and that's where we stay in tune with it. And Gloria is just phenomenal. She's so great to work with. She works with the budget committee. While she works with us very well, she keeps us informed, and we ask for reports, and she really, you know, gets it to us. So, but yeah, I keep an eye on it, and I keep an eye, I don't just look at the number overall. I look at each line item, because I have to sign financials every week.
Right.
You know, and I read those. I read the payables and the payroll and so forth like that, on top of the overall budget. Sorry, that was a long-winded. I hope that answered something.
Yeah. Madam Chair, I have two more questions.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So, so one is kind of about the overall structure. I don't know, I don't know how New Hampshire works. Might be similar. It might be not. So, we are one of the few, and I'm taking your question and your explanation, oddly, from the last interview, because it was great, one of few towns that do not have a regionalized school district or independent. And while we're all part of the town, there's the town, and there's the school. The school really does their own thing, although their budget kind of falls under ours. They do their own thing. So, I'm interested in about, while remaining individual, how, because we have a very strong collaborative relationship right now with the Town Manager and the school district, which is kind of the first time in history. It's working really well. Oh, yeah. And so, I personally am very interested in keeping that going. So, I'm interested to hear about that piece.
Well, you know what? You just said a key word that is phenomenal, and that is part of my teamwork concept, and that is collaboration, right? And I think that's so key in this day and age, in how leaders can get together and work together. And also, not only just work together and maintaining what we have, but, you know, forecasting the future and planning ahead, but also solving problems, you know? And sometimes those school districts have problems. Well, let's have maybe the Town Manager look at it from a different perspective, you know, from a different eyes than what we're seeing, because maybe we're not seeing it all. And you work together to resolve issues. And I think that's phenomenal. And I don't know what your budget is. When I was on the school board, our budget was at the tune of $68 million. And, yeah, it was, and it was four-town district, but it was, it was convoluted a lot. You found, but once you dive into it and you learn it and understand it, we cut some things. We moved money, because we found that there was money, just a lot of hidden money and stuff that wasn't being spent. So, but, but I think working with your other leaders and other department heads is so crucial in this position. And having an understanding of what the overall goal is. And frankly, at the end of the day, we all answer to the taxpayer. So, we want to do right by the taxpayer as well.
I apologize for that loud motorcycle that went by. I don't know if you've heard it.
It's okay. I got cars going by all the time, so.
My final question is just a small one about your resume. I'm thinking it might be a typo, and you're not starting a new position in this coming July. Are you already the General Safety Manager for McMillan Transport, or is that upcoming?
I apologize. That was a typo. Yeah, I'm already the.
Don't know that. I was just concerned. We're set to start in July and hadn't, but you were applying for this.
No, no, I've been doing it. And I actually, which is interesting, which is another good thing, is experiences. I actually do strategic planning for the company, and I have multiple things that I do. I run the day-to-day operations. He actually has me running the company, because he's running his other company. So, it's been quite the experience on to see how this all works in the private sector, which I love the experience. But it's not really challenging. But, you know, it's, but it's a great experience from the private sector.
Yeah.
A great boss. He's wonderful. He's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. LaPointe. Mrs. Blanchard, any thoughts, comments, questions?
No.
We're touching on the bases.
Excellent. Madam Chair, I do have one. What would be your availability?
Well, I will tell you this. As a Town Manager in that position, you know, I hate to use the word 24/7, but in reality, you know, it's just not a nine-to-five job. And you have to understand that going into it. There's a commitment here, and it's a commitment to the board, and it's a commitment to the community. So, I'm not a clock puncher. So, I don't just punch in and punch out. I mean, I do it till the job is done. If it takes 12 hours to do it, it takes 12 hours. If it takes 60 hours a week to do it, then it takes 60 hours, you know? But it's called time management. You got to manage your time accordingly. Now, after, obviously, I would, I would personally make it a point to have my cellphone on 24/7, because, you know, things happen, and you need to be apprised of them, so I can apprise the board and so forth, and work with department heads and so forth. So, I have to have that regular availability. So, without saying 24/7, but in a sense, some way you are. So, and that's how I would operate that.
Okay. Yeah, the town hall is open Monday through Thursday.
Yep.
A little bit later on Mondays to make up for the close on Friday, you know, et cetera. The commute would not be an issue. I don't know how long. Okay. Okay.
It's a nice ride, actually.
Yeah, really. We have, we're meeting on Monday evening for, we have an executive session to review and make our decision. Should we, we choose to offer it to you, when would you be able to start work?
I would say, I would say, just to be fair to my current employer, because he's such, I mean, he's so great. I would give him two weeks' notice.
Okay, that's fine.
And then, it'll be two weeks from that, so.
Okay.
But I want you to, I think it's important you all know something, why I'm so passionate about this. And this is, this is why I love what I do with the Selectmen and the community. I've been involved in my community for a very, very long time, over 20-plus years, been involved. But what I like about this, and what you're going to find about me, is I'm a proven leader with a great work ethic. And part of being that is, even though the word Town Manager says Town Manager, I'm not a manager, I'm a leader. There's a big difference. People want to follow a leader. You know, managers, they have to listen to. I'm a leader, and I'm very genuine and sincere. And that is the difference between me and anyone else probably applying for this job, and I don't even know them. But I can attest to that. And I will work hard to get the job done and do what's best for the community and for the Board of Selectmen. So, and that's, and I, because I know what it's like. I sit on the other.
Been there, yeah.
There with you. So, I know. So, and that's why I think we could relate so well.
Now, how would you handle, you know, coming from out of state, New Hampshire, obviously Massachusetts does things a little differently down here. How would you prepare yourself for a municipal role in Massachusetts as opposed to New Hampshire?
So, you know, I'm, I like to, I like to educate myself, and I like to learn. And you guys have statutes, but yours is RSA, yours is a Commonwealth. So, it's a little different, but that's how you find out the different rules and what you can and cannot do. I know the Attorney General just pointed out in Massachusetts that May 15th is like the town meeting. You know, that law, they passed that law. So, you know, I've been doing little things like that. I learn. And if I don't, I will ask somebody. And I'm not afraid to ask fellow employees that are working there, because I mean, people that have been there longer. I'm not afraid to ask, you know, because how else are you going to learn?
Right.
I am a member, I am a member of the ICE MA, so, and there'll probably be, there's a course that I want to take with them down the road, but related to this position. But, but I like learning, and I like, you know, I'm 52 years old. I like learning, you know? And the day that I stop learning is the day I need to just retire completely and do nothing. I golf, so.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying. All right. I think you've answered all of my questions. Anything further from the board, before we ask Mr. Baldwin if he has any for us? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions you have for us, Mr. Baldwin?
I, you know, the big question is, you know, one of the big decisions-making, whatever, whoever gets the position, I'm sure they're thinking the same thing, is looking long-term. I can tell you this, from my perspective and from my position only, I'm looking for this to be the last job that I work. So, I'm looking for 10, 15 years down the road. Now, I don't, I'm not naive to think that, you know, you have a contract and all that, which I get. But that's my overall goal. And I think that's important, you wanted to say, and that, you know, I'm not looking to go anywhere else. I'm not looking for any other job. This is it. And that's it. So, and I, and I look forward to it. So, that's what I'm hoping for, is that this position can develop into a long.
All right. So, I think we're all set. As I mentioned, we'll be meeting Monday night to review everything. So, in the interim, if you have any questions or anything you think of, please reach out to Town Manager's Office, Mary Calendrella. Otherwise, we'll be in touch with you probably early, mid next week and let you know.
Excellent. Thank you all so much for your time. I know it's a, it's a beautiful night out, so enjoy the rest of your evening. But thank you for your time. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye.
Could I ask you a very quick question?
One second. I'm just going to stop the recording. Stop video. Stop video. I clicked on stop video.
It's still recording.
It's still recording. Oh, Linda, are you recording?
You probably need to be still, no?
No, I'm not recording, but yeah, you should until your meeting is finished.
Okay.
My very, my very quick question.
I have the recording.
My very quick question is this, have you Googled these different people?
With the exception of the last one, yes, I'm sorry, manager.
Yes, thank you.
We had a number of applicants and I did a Google search of all of them. And what's today? So Tuesday and the first one tonight are the only ones that made the cut based on the Google search.
Did you do, did you did, did you Google search this one that we just talked, you just talked with?
Yeah, because he was last minute.
I would like to suggest you do.
Yeah.
Because I, I did.
Mm-hmm.
And if you go to the, if I'm looking at the right person, if you go to the Eagle Tribune reports from last year and then uh, something a few years before that, um.
Thank you.
I mean, I actually, I like him the best of the three myself, I mean, I think he's the best match, but um, it's always, you know, um, in terms of this. Down and stuff.
We're, we're still in open meetings, so please.
Yes, we are.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can't, yeah. Could suggest you Google. Um, we, I know that during the manager's search last, for the, for the la- last time we went through this, we, we ended up doing this and found, discovered some things about some of the candidates that the headhunter hadn't.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just due diligence.
Yeah, that's it, that's all I'm, that's all I'm suggesting.
Yeah. Yeah. We will do that, thank you.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and I know, um, well, I'll be interested on Friday, uh, Monday rather, because um, that way the town's financial future.
Correct.
It's important.
All right, and then any other questions, comments? Okay. Um, hearing and seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
This is the point.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, I will second it. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at six forty-seven.
See you Monday.
Thank you all.
Everyone.